Okay, Mayor, we are live and ready to begin the meeting.
Fantastic. I'm going to call to order the City of Blue Ash Council meeting of February 11th, 2021.
Okay, Mayor, we are live and ready to begin the meeting.
And we'll start with opening ceremonies, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible.
Divisible.
Liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Jamie Eifert, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Jeff Capel.
Here.
Councilwoman Jill Cole.
Here.
Councilman Lisa Rwanke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Promote Javary.
Here.
Councilman Joe Leet.
Here.
Councilwoman Katie Schneider.
Here.
Mayor Mark Serken.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. We have a public hearing to consider a final development plan, Resolution 2021-01, a new residential development in the Parkview portion of the neighborhoods at Summit Park, subdivision in the Summit Park zoning district. So the way we'll do this is like every public hearing, the developer in this case has some modification options to present. That's Matt Walker of WP Land and his cohorts. We will have the opportunity to ask questions. The public will have a chance to comment. The only person that have registered to comment on this subject is John Earls. And then we'll close the public hearing and have deliberations laden in the meeting during the planning and zoning committee session. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Walker or David or whoever Matt would like to speak.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Matt Walker with WP Land Company. Thank you guys for bringing us back up on the agenda from our last meeting. I believe you all were presented with a letter that goes through a lot of, that addressed some of the concerns we were speaking at our last meeting as to the traffic and to the financial impact of the site. And I'm not going to go into that, but we are here for any questions that you may have on the details of that letter and where that came from so that we could hopefully be helpful if you had any questions with that. Also, there were two additions that were sent, which one was a color rendering of the alleys, hopefully trying to help offset some of the ideas from a black and white layout that we had before. We created a rendering that gave you a realistic look and view of what it will feel like off the back balconies looking into those areas. And hopefully that presents a better picture in your mind as it is much more true to what we planned on doing for the neighborhood. And then finally, due to some of the comments that we've gotten, we did offer an alternative layout to the plan, which basically helped with some of the concerns about the transition of density from the davenry section through the project. We still believe in our original plan. However, we felt like this would achieve both goals in helping get a more gradual increase of density through the project while still creating a successful feel layout and design. If you, you know, I think, yeah, it's popped up there. That's popped up there for you to see, and it allows you to, it just basically took the condo buildings that used to sit in the, in the middle of the, of our layout next to Summit Park, and it moved them down and shifted them closer to the, to the, to the future office buildings developments and closer to the apartments that are, that are a little further down. That said, both of these layouts are consistent with the original overall zoning approval for, for Summit, you know, for Summit Park. And, you know, with that, we're here for questions. I, we went through fairly thoroughly the first time, and I don't want to bore you and reiterate all that stuff again. However, myself and my team, Graham Cabaly with New Republic Architecture, Clint Venken, Steve Dragon with the overall developer, and then Joe Kramer is also with us as part of the engineering team. So as you guys consider this and some of the alterations that we made that hopefully addressed and helped you guys feel a little bit more comfortable after tabling at the last time, we'd love to address any of your concerns. So with that, I guess I'll put it back to you and, and we can, we can go from there.
Okay, so I don't have everybody on screen, so we're going to have to step up or raise a hand or just start talking and figure out who, who wants to ask questions on council. Katie, I see you.
So I have a question. In your opinion, between the two different designs, what do you like better about the original? And what's the trade off between changing that to kind of the second proposal?
There's, there's, there's good and bad as always when you, when you, when you change a layout. And the original one, we liked it because it allowed a breakup of products within a development. So it allowed some single family detached, unattached condo buildings and some, some additional single family attached and detached to the side, where this layout is, is a little bit more consistent with here's your single family and detached section, here's your condo section, it's more separated. That said, we, there are some, some benefits. The landscaping area in the new layout that you can see in the middle creates a walking corridor and some very nice gardens in the front of those, those units that, right, yeah, I'm circling it with my mouth, but you guys can't see that. Right in the middle there, it created a very nice feel, and it brought a softness to some of the units. So that's a positive. So, so again, there's, there's trade off. We like the breaking up of, of, of uses as opposed to a town home attached and detached section and a condo section. However, we think both of these layouts are extremely well done and will, and will create a successful project in Blue Ash.
Great, thank you.
I just want to say I like the alternative plan, and I'm happy you guys accepted my plan like an eye doctor. Better one, better two. But, yeah, it's, the alternative plan, it does show a lot more room. It doesn't look as packed in, and the units are more segregated. And in my eye, it's, it's just a better layout. I gotta, I just gotta say, you know. And that's all I'm going to say on this for now.
I'd like to say I liked the idea of the first plan because there was a lot of symmetry to it, but I agree with Joe. I really like the, the gardening detail that you're showing there by putting all of the town homes together. I also like that there are more detached homes than any other plan. And this almost feels, it feels like you might have more of a neighborhood feel to each of the different areas, which I like that. And I think it's also maybe a more logical progression of density, you know, single family homes to, you know, these more dense, and then to the taller, you know, buildings that are more, you know, more solid, that transition better to the office kind of a product. That's all I got.
Yeah, Jill was kind of getting at a lot of the, a couple of the same thoughts that I had. I mean, I didn't have any problem with the original plan, but when I look at the alternative, I do like that, I think if you're, under the alternative plan, you're keeping all, all the attached and detached town homes more together. I think it's easier for them to kind of have a little more of a neighborhood feel that way. And, and then when I look at the original, I almost wonder if the units, if that little set of buildings to the far right almost wouldn't feel like they were a little isolated. And then also, like Jill said, I think the, the natural flow from the, the west side of the entire neighborhood, you know, starting at Plainfield Road all the way to the east side of the neighborhood, ending it at Glendale-Fifer or Milford. The continuum works well that way. You're starting with the single family homes with a little bit of yard and the davenry, and then you move over into this area where you've got some, some more single family homes, both attached and detached. And then you move a little further east, and it's the condos. And then when you go further beyond that, that's where you're going to have the, the senior living center apartments, a lot of the, the, the office. So it's kind of, those of us who are left side, left brain, that continuum, continuum, I think, works very well.
I see, this is PJ, that you have increased the single family from 36 to 42. Am I right?
Cleat, can you help me with that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that committed to memory, so I'll just cheat and look at the legends here. So we had a single family total of 36 on the original plan, and we have 42 on the current alternative. Yes, so. Six more.
And I will say, you know, the one, I believe that that central garden allows that that additional density to feel less than, than, than maybe it did before. And that's one of the, that's, that central garden is really a plus and will create a extremely good feel in the neighborhood. That's, that's one of the real positives of this plan.
PJ, this is David Walt. I, I just want to make sure I didn't get lost in that. That is, yeah, there's an increase in single family units, but there's a decrease in the multifamily units. So it's the exact same, it's the exact same number of units when it's all done.
Right. Yeah, but he didn't mention, so I thought I just wanted to double confirm. Thank you.
My comments are very similar to the rest of everybody else. And, you know, you guys, Matt, you've been very accommodating over time here on, on your design here. And you didn't even have to do an alternative plan, but you did. And it looks great. I think it flows better, it adds more green space, and really works very well, the design does now with davenry on one end, apartments on the other, and we got some assisted living and healthcare businesses in there too. But it really does work well. I think you've done a nice job.
Thank you. Feels good to be associated with some really smart people, Cleat.
I don't think so.
No? Okay. And let's move to, we have a resident that would like to speak, John Earls. John, we typically give you about three minutes.
Actually, Mark, I don't have anything to add.
Is that John?
Yeah, this is John, and I don't have anything to add to this. When I was trying to sign up for the meeting, I had to sign up for something. So there's my three minutes.
Your three minutes were about 20 seconds. I love it. Thank you very much, John. All right. With that, we're going to close the public hearings, and we'll come back to this during PJ's part of planning and zoning a little bit later in the meeting. So, all right, let's move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 28th, 2021?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Jamie, do we have any communications to council?
There are none tonight, Your Honor.
Any reports from outside agencies? Seeing none. The mayor's report for January 2021 will be entered into the public record. Do I have a motion to accept the financial report for January of 2021? Second?
Second.
So moved?
Aye.
All right. We do not have anybody else signed up for hearings for citizens at the, I checked right before. So unless, Kelly, I have that incorrect?
That's correct, Mayor. Nobody else.
Okay, so we're going to move to committee reports. That didn't take long. Planning and zoning, vice mayor is your very chairperson.
Okay, here. First I'd like to do is that I want to put a motion to pull the resolution 2020-01 from the table. Anybody second?
Second.
Voice vote? Yay?
Yes.
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 Okay, yes, everybody, yes. No, no? Okay. Now we, we're going to go into the discussion about the option we have, which was proposed on 2020-01, the original, and the 2020, 2021-01, which is alternative. So I'd like to ask the questions. Is this, which of a plan that we would like to go for it, either original or the alternative?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the alternative plan.
Second.
Anybody second?
I think what we have to do first is make a move, is have a motion to amend.
I, first, yes, so first, everybody says, Jimmy, I was just waiting, Jimmy, I was waiting for everybody concerned that whether they want to all want to go for alternative plan or not. So as I see it, that everybody likes to go for the alternative plan. So if it is that, I would like to, I would like to motion to approve the resolution as amended on 2020-01.
But we don't have an amended, we don't have an amended motion yet.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and make the motion to make the amendment to the resolution of 2021-01. Well, the specific amendment is the alternative. For the alternative plan, yes.
I second it.
Okay. Just a second. Yeah, I'm sorry. So just to be clear for the record, those are the last five or six pages that were attached to, and they are noted, February 11th, 2021, Public Hearing Exhibits-Resolution 2021-01. Is that, is that the point of the motion? Okay, all right. So those will be the, the documents that are referenced in the amended motion. Thanks.
Clearly, the option where the condo buildings, the multi-units are moved to the east, and all the other units are on the west side and the south side.
Yeah. The only reason I'm raising the point for, not only for the developer, but also for city to enforce, we all know what we're looking at and what the developer's going to build to and what we're going to enforce on. So that's, I just wanted that to be clear in terms of the attachments.
Fantastic.
Okay. Thanks.
So we have a motion in a second, and we need a voice vote to approve the amendment, just that, what the amendment is.
Correct.
Okay. Can you take the vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we need a motion to adopt the amended resolution, and then we can discuss it.
Okay. Well, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-01. Anybody has any discussion?
We have a second?
On the amended version.
The amended, a motion to, to adopt.
Motion.
Resolution.
Go ahead. So, any discussion for adopted, adopted Resolution 20-2021-01?
The only thing I have to say is, as we've said before, residents requested options in housing. I'm comfortable it's not going to put a significant financial burden on the city. We've got the crime lab, the rehabilitation hospital, we've got assisted living coming on board. I don't want to see the project languish. We asked for condos. And I think, the long and short of it, the new, the new version, the amended version, looks like more of a neighborhood to me. And that's what we were all looking for. So that's all I have to say. I'm very happy with the amended version.
Good work.
I must say thank you to the developers also. We asked a couple of years ago, no more apartments. And you guys came through on that. No apartments with a, a nice looking neighborhood. I really enjoy the alternative plan. And I have nothing but good thoughts about it. And I hope it's a success. I'm sure it will be.
Yeah, I'm very positive on this as well. I definitely recall three years ago, when, when I was, only had one or two months of length of, length of service as a council member, that many of us on council and a whole lot of residents were saying, enough with, with overloading the city with more and more apartments. And we asked, let's, let's get condos and town homes here. So, so here we are, three years later, we, we've got exactly what we asked for. And I think this, that this alternative plan is even better than the one we saw last month. I think it just hits all the right spots.
Any other discussion? Doesn't look like, Jamie, can you call, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Leet.
Yes.
Mayor Serken.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
That's all, Mayor, I have.
Thank you all very much. I couldn't say thank you during the discussions when you said the kind words, so I will butt in and just say thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move to Finance and Administration. Lisa Rwanke, Chairperson.
Jamie, please read Resolution Number 2021-10 by Title Only.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an amended agreement with the Miami Valley Risk Management Association, Inc., Moverma, and accepting the revised bylaws associated therewith.
Adopt Resolution Number 2021-10.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Great organization, and everybody sings praises about it. So as far as I've heard, we, that city's been happy with it for decades.
Long, long time.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing done. Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Councilman Leet.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Oh, we've, we've lost him.
Did we lose him?
Looks like we've lost him.
Well, let me go on and come back to him. How about Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Mayor Serken.
Yes.
Um, when he rejoined, should I ask him then? So it will pass either way.
Yeah, that's true. We need to give him a minute or two to jump back on.
Coming back on. There he comes.
Okay.
Oh, here we are.
There it is.
Was everybody was disconnected or just me?
Just you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're voting on 2021-10, the Moverma bylaws, and we're coming back to get your vote. Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Seven yeses. Perfect.
Hard way.
It's a process.
Works.
All right. Jamie, please read Resolution Number 2021-11 by Title Only.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a multi-year collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 3203, the firefighter bargaining unit.
We could adopt Resolution Number 2021-11.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Leet.
Yes.
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Mayor Serken.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Jamie, please read Resolution Number 2021-12 by Title Only.
Amending Resolution 2020-63, the 2021 Position Classification Plan and the 2021 Pay Plan as provided for in Resolution 201763 Administrative Rules and Regulations.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-12.
Is that good?
Any discussion?
I remember David talking about the fact that he would revisit this regularly, and if it was necessary to adjust, that we would come and talk about adjusting it. And apparently, it's coming necessary to adjust, and we want our people taken care of. So I'm for it.
Yeah, I'm too. DJ?
Yes.
Okay. Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilman Leet.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Mayor Serken.
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Lee. We're going to move to miscellaneous business. I'll throw it to David.
Yeah, so as everyone knows, last year, we put together some concept plans regarding the town square development. We took that out to a public process, Concept A versus Concept B, which I'm going to have Mr. Cruz talk about here in a minute. The public process that we had late last year for several months, number of respondents and surveys. So we thought we would share those results with you today. I'm going to spoil Brian's big reveal, but Concept B was overwhelmingly favored and supported the most. But nonetheless, I think he still wants, I think it's still some value for you to go through a little bit of, of his presentation on that. So, Mr. Cruz, floor's all yours.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Let me share my screen here. Everybody got it? You guys see okay?
Yep. Yes.
All right. So like David mentioned, we're going to go through a brief look at some of the results. If you remember, we had these out on the street for about three or four months. We requested feedback from the residents in a couple of different ways. Primarily though, it was done online, of course, due to COVID, et cetera. If you're familiar with our processes in the past, when we would do public information sessions, if we were to have an open house or two or three or four on a subject like this, even a project that would be this exciting, or folks would want to be engaged with, it'd be very rare that we'd be able to get 500 folks to provide feedback. And the way we set up this survey online was pretty helpful for us in terms of really understanding what folks wanted to express their opinions, because we gave opportunities for written feedback quite a bit. In fact, of the 500 responses we had, we had about 950 comments above and beyond the actual questions that we had that had the, you know, the radio buttons in them and the options, et cetera. But like David mentioned, we have two concepts. I will very, very briefly just remind you of what those two concepts are before we jump into the actual survey results. And then just to wrap up this slide here, we did the online survey, but we also did a quick feedback forum, which was just another way for folks to give us feedback. Yeah, we did, we, if anybody sent us a letter or sent individual emails, we put all that into the data before we ended up kind of crunching the numbers out. So really quickly, Concept A, if you remember, was a little bit more, we called this just a refresh of the current space. You can see where the pavilion stays, but we just kind of make it a little bit more airy. The restroom stays. We brighten it up a little bit, add a little bit of aesthetic fix to that. The memorial, regardless in both plans, was at least, in, in both plans, was being picked up and put back down so we could, you know, repair the base of it. Plan B does show a little bit of a revised memorial. But again, certain elements of this plan, of course, can, some of it could be in Concept A, and some of it could be in Concept B. We can kind of use them synonym, synonymously. By Concept A, you see here is a little bit more of a refresh of the current space we have. It was a lower price point, but it didn't also, it wasn't as laden with features as Concept B. Concept B replaces the stage in the pavilion, puts it in between the memorial lawn and the performance lawn, or the mini great lawn, I guess you would say. We have the opportunity for a play area, small dog park, and a new restroom building, which is off of Hunt as opposed to where it currently is today. And then we added this small grove space in here, which is kind of like a picnic area. I don't have them with me, but remember, we had the perspective drawings of that, that kind of gave you a look inside the park and how these two are a little bit different. This concept does show a little bit of a different look to the memorial. This concept does show a little bit of a different look to the memorial, salvaging some of, salvaging the elements that we have in it today, such as the pavers, the flags, et cetera. This concept is actually showing us, conceivably saving the actual pavers themselves and reusing them. If we could continue to reuse them, that would definitely be the intention. If not, we would just reproduce them like for like. But again, the main difference between the two is the open spaces and this plan is starting from scratch. So like David mentioned, this slide here shows you kind of the attitudes towards both concepts. And red would basically, red is a do not like, gray would be neutral and green would be like. So the way this question was asked was very simple. Do you like Concept A? Do you not like Concept B? Or are you neutral about Concept A? And then, of course, everybody had the opportunity to answer that for both Concept A and B. You can see that Concept A is a little bit more polarizing. You have two ends to it. A lot of folks in there kind of felt neutral about A or not necessarily excited per se. Concept B had 19% of the folks that said they weren't interested in Concept B or they did not like it. 7% were neutral. 74% said that they enjoyed Concept B. Any questions about that? Or the concepts themselves? Okay. So what we want to do is real just quickly talk about the drivers for the decision making, because we did, we did ask folks to give us feedback. Since they were able to do that in written form, it wasn't so much, do you like Concept B? Do you like Concept B? It was more so why? Why would you like one or why did you not like one? What elements of it got you excited and which kind of did the opposite? So here, this shows overall, as we know, Concept B was accepted two times more than Concept A. However, a main factor driving the Concept B was the fresh design and modernized layout, which is a lot of the feedback that we got from folks, that they liked the modern layout and we were starting from scratch. Okay? This one's interesting, as cost was another driver between the two. So if somebody mentioned that they really enjoyed A, they would leave a comment stating perhaps, I like A because it costs less. However, at the same time, the more costly new amenities, you know, for example, the new amphitheater, dog park, the new layout, a new restroom building, et cetera, kids' play area, those things that are a little bit more costly were also the drivers for the excitement about Concept B. And then this is actually my last slide, but I'll talk about this one here for a little while. Because what's important in a survey like this, when we kind of ask, you know, five or six questions, but again, we're asking your opinion in written word, there was 950 individual responses or comments made. So we were reading through books. Folks really gave us a lot of feedback and it was great. And so out of that, of course, I can't take all that data and cram it into a situation that would be very easy to explain. So what we did here is we took all those comments and then basically we themed them out. So the highest themes that were talked about were family and kid-friendly spaces. I think that's pretty evident with parks and rec spaces in general. That's going to be a driver regardless. Folks are very interested in spaces where they can hang out with their family, enjoy and have some green space. The Veterans Memorial, staging concerts and cost were the next three. The Veterans Memorial is an interesting one, because I think the 156 respondents that mentioned the Veterans Memorial most certainly shows that it's important. Of those 156, we had about 61, I believe, that mentioned in their comments that they felt like the memorial should not be changed whatsoever. The remaining of them said, in one way, shape or form of the other, it's important. But they didn't necessarily say they were worried about it being changed in shape, form, et cetera. And then some of them, of course, were positive about changing the shape or location, et cetera. So I just wanted to make sure that was pointed out. Staging concerts was a very popular conversation. The vast majority of those were very popular, I'm sorry, very positive about the concerts that we currently have. They wanted to make sure Friday night concerts were coming back. And they referenced the stage itself and just were happy that we were investing in the stage because they appreciated the program that we do down there. Cost was, of course, one that was brought up. Dog park was brought up too. Dog park was a little polarizing, but most certainly on the positive end for the dog park. 142 folks pointed out the dog park in their comments. Three times more folks mentioned that they were very positive about the dog park, as opposed to those that were against the dog park. But there were certainly two ends to that. Folks either, you know, they really enjoyed it or they wanted to point out to us that they perhaps didn't think it was the ideal spot for it. But again, three times more respondents mentioned that they thought the dog park was a positive amenity. Design and layout, dining options and green space kind of finished out the theme conversation throughout the discussion. And that is actually it. That is a wrap up of all the information that we got out of it. But again, like David mentioned, what we were looking for from the public is a preference over Concept A or Concept B. And we felt like that was pretty evident. Any questions?
I'm just wondering how the dog park's going to work. I'm not, I'm kind of up in the air about that because of the complaints we had the other week, the one over in Summit, you know? Maintenance on it, who's going to complain? How many complaints?
Yeah, the answer to that, Joe, is yes.
Yeah, I thought as much. I mean, you know, what do you know? It's one you want, you know?
Right. Now, just a quick distinction. The dog park in a more urbanized setting like this is significantly smaller. It's not intended for, similar to Summit Park, for you to bring your two German Shepherds and expect they're going to get a lot of running and free play and what have you. The setting here is, and Brian and I, as well as I think Gordon, went and saw some other more urban setting. It really is, we're talking the size of our conference room, you know, the Blue Ash Conference Room that council sometimes meets in, not the council chambers.
Sure, sure.
Conference room. So you're not talking about something remotely the same size or scale. So maintenance is going to be different. You probably could, you probably might not even have grass on that. It might just be gravel or some sort of impervious surface like that. So it's a completely different concept than at Summit Park. So just understand that that it's a different experience.
Agreed, agreed.
Good point though, Joe. I'll mention too as well, there were some comments in the dog park that, about the dog park specifically, that referenced Summit Parks. And there was a small request through some of the voices to mention, well, I'd like to see you invest in that one before. But they, you know, some of folks actually mentioned, dog park's a great idea. We'd like to see you invest a little bit further in Summit Parks before focusing on something here, because they were perhaps a little bit leery about how that would work out. And the urban dog park, as David referenced, is much, it's not as, it's not as popular, of course. If you've seen them, you understand them. Washington Park would be a great example. But if not, it is a little bit hard to kind of envision the operations and the function.
I would say, I would echo Joe's comments too. You know, it's not, it's not a very big space and, you know, it just seems like it's going to be more inclined to attract problems rather than, you know, give people what they're wanting. You know, there's not very much room there at that area anyway. So just wonder if it's the best use of space.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think from our perspective, even though that's a fair question, I think it's, you're providing something in a different part of town for a different type of dog park experience. You know, as long as you understand it's a different experience. It's just going to be something for a different part of town and a different type of experience. It really is just not to be confused with what other people think of dog parks. It's, and so as long as you understand that, then you're going to minimize all the problems and concerns. And no heavy user is going to go in there one time and be misled as to what that experience is like. And there's limited space there for it, but, you know, as Brian said, three times as many users supported it and liked the idea. So I think there's something to be said about diversity of experiences in all parks. And the last thing I would say, you know, whether we keep the dog park or not, I really don't care. But I will say this, my number one complaint about Town Square Park is it's underutilization. So, you know, if that's something else to just make a few more people stop by and use it for a few more minutes, even though it's not the full dog park experience, I'm happy about that. Because I was really frustrated to watch that park for the last 10, 15 years be almost vacant except for Friday night concerts. So anything you can do to just add little elements of it and not worry about how perfect it is for a Friday night concert. Think about the other 300 nights or 300 days a year. So that's, that's really kind of what's driving our idea of providing a diversity of little experience and little activities for everyone.
Agreed.
I mean, I've said before that, that I thought a dog park there was not a good idea. It's a misuse of space. We know that this park, it's not a big one. There's a limited use of space. And so that's going to mean you want it to be versatile where it can be used for different things. Now, we know a dog park, just what happens at dog parks is not going to be versatile. It's going to have to be segregated as a dog park all the time. So I think that's, it's a misuse of space and would detract from the area. And we have said before, we, you know, we don't, we want to make sure we have a distinction between Summit Park and downtown. So I think if we wanted to do a second dog park somewhere, I would just put it at Summit Park and do it there. Then another thing that I kind of walked into recently, that I think is a factor here, is when I looked, when I walked further into the nearby apartment complex, which is obviously where there's a huge group of residents who would, on paper, be the first ones who would want to use that kind of a dog park. That apartment complex essentially has their own little dog park right there. I mean, it's not labeled dog park. There's not a sign that says it is, but it's fenced at both ends and it's mostly grass. When you look at the layout, it's clearly meant to be what's essentially its own dog park. So, I mean, the residents, the nearest hundreds of residents who would be the target audience to put a dog, to use a dog park there, they already have their own. So that just would further, just drilled into me that a dog park at this location is just not the best use of land.
Okay, I guess I'm a little, I wasn't prepared for the anti-dog park movement after the studies said there are support for it. And we were just trying to explain it's, you know, again, it's not the same experience. It's truly, is just a small off-leash area that is feet by feet. It's not taking a lot of area, but, you know, you guys go strongly about it. As we go through the design phase, you can crush the dog park. Pretty irrelevant myself. I still go back to, I think the park needs to have a variety of little things to do and that's something that's very little for someone else to do. But, you know, pretty, pretty open minded. That's, you guys get to make that decision at the end of the day. We're not asking for final approval tonight. We were sharing the concept and that was one of the ones that got some support.
Well, I think that the whole design with all the green space, it's really beautiful. And I think it's going to really encourage people to frequent the restaurants that are around there and even, you know, take their food out there. I just think it's going to make it a really attractive, nice place, no matter what the fine tuning is of all the details.
Hey David, this is PJ. I, you know, I've been, keep on talking about the parking over there. This is the time, I think you can put it to rest and explain me why we are not thinking of putting a parking, some extra parking underground or over the ground. I've been keep talking to you. So can you enlighten me what's going on and whether we want it, we don't want it? Or what is the, what's going on?
Well, I don't think there's any want or don't want. I think there's just probably going to be a cost limitation. But that's something we can add as we go into the construction design phase, is we can, you know, scope out a parking garage, whether it's underground or above ground there, to try to double it. But from experience, I wouldn't be surprised that the park, the cost of that garage is, is 50% of the cost of the entire park project as we have budgeted now. So to put that in perspective, I think the budget now for Concept B is, you know, five, six, seven to eight million dollars. I bet you the garage would be four to, you know, four million on top of that. So that would be your biggest challenge.
And I bet that the majority of users in the park are those that are walking up. So people that are, you know, of course, the apartments that are right there, but my street, Arcadia, I mean, there's a lot of people out now walking around that, to your point, David, aren't utilizing it. We walk up to that park, but there's nothing to keep you there. So you kind of keep on walking. So my guess is that it looks nicer, there's more green space, you can sit down. It's comfortable that it's going to be mostly people that are utilizing it that, that live right there and can walk and not necessarily driving in. If you're going to drive, you'd probably drive to Summit Park.
Yeah, Katie, I think that's, that's accurate. I think, you know, from our perspective, as I was lamenting before, not a whole lot of users of the park, period. But what users there are, it does seem to be more, you know, neighborhood oriented. And, you know, that's, that's probably not surprising, given the size and scale of it and what have you. Yeah, there's nothing for people to drive from Montgomery to here, even when the park's redone. It's probably still going to be mostly a neighborhood park now, happens to be a very unique neighborhood because it includes downtown and all the surrounding neighborhoods around downtown. Some of our highest population density in all of Blue Ash. So it's very walkable for a significant portion of our population. But yeah, I think it's, it's going to be primarily still, let's just say, a regional destination, neighborhood destination, if that makes sense.
And I'm wondering, would there be opportunity to explore if parking, well, if it does become an issue or to kind of prevent it, talking with some of the neighboring businesses? Like I know, is it the Hills Building that has a surface parking lot? I imagine they only use it during the day.
Yeah.
But looking at other opportunities of things that are already existing.
Yeah, I think for ordinary, you know, getting back to PJ's question, I think for ordinary daily use, you know, the parking demand in downtown isn't being exceeded right now. So certainly now, you know, when this park is redone, Friday night concerts and things like that, there'll be a surge and it doesn't accommodate that. But you also have the opportunity potentially, when we redevelop the corner of Kenwood and Cooper, for there to be some surplus parking there for those types of bigger events. But, you know, again, I go back to what I said, other than Friday night concerts, think about this park in terms of 300 other days a year, not the, you know, 10 to 12 Friday night concerts. It really is about making this park more livable and usable for ordinary users. And that ordinary user isn't probably going to be super crowded. It's going to be a nice group of people there, but not necessarily overcrowded. So that's why I think parking is less of a major concern, but I don't want to dismiss it.
But David, don't you think that when we have a nice park like that, more people will come from surrounding to enjoy the park and have a picnic there than what we have right now? The traffic we, what we have right now, that will increase. And what I was thinking that, hey, if we put a parking lot, that we can put it down as a, you know, paid parking also. We charge $5 or $3, you know, whatever it is, you can do that also. So, you know, I think that it will be, it will help for a lot of our vendors that they are there. And so that's my thought, but you says that it will, expense will be a whole lot more putting the underground or overground parking we're talking about.
Yeah, like I said, I wouldn't eliminate it. I think it's certainly something we need to look at. There may be some other benefits to some of the businesses around it also to use that part, extra parking lot. We just probably need to, you know, if that's, that's direction you want us to look into, we just probably need to scope that some more and then recognize the cost versus benefit of it. That's all.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? So seems like everyone's no more. So just to answer the question that is what's next on this? Brian and his staff's done a great job on the input part. So probably a little bit mid-year or something like that, you would probably see us start to engage in more specific design with the engineers or designers, starting to work towards fleshing out some more specific concepts and specific costs. Make a report back to you, you know, where we're heading. Certainly, you know, some of the Now, make a report back to you, you know, where we're heading. Certainly, um, you know, some of the comments you made tonight, we would incorporate that into that. Um, if everything goes well, then we maybe, maybe uh next summer, um, you know, this this. Project would be undertaken. Of course, we still have a question mark over our head with the budget and and the economy and what have you. Um, but that would be the plan is is Brian will be working on that later this year and and giving you some updates um at that point in time. But at this point, based on this uh report, we're certainly going to proceed forward with some more uh now design work rather than schematic work on um concept. Brian, I think you had another item or two you wanted to give a quick update on?
Yeah, well, I got the four, if you don't mind. Just to give a um real quick um mini progress report on another project, actually, that we've been working on for a little while. Put together a feasibility study was on the rec center pool. It's a forty-one-year-old structure. So we're just trying to stay ahead of um. You know, it's life expectancy in a sense. Um, so what our hope is, is at some point in time this year, we have something to share with you and just wanted to let you know that. That one's underway. We're getting pretty close to wrapping up a feasibility study on its condition. I got a really nice condition report as well as some some concepts. Um, some very light concepts to see what uh if we were to um endeavor the the process of actually replacing the pool, what that could look like. Um, and then one other quick note, and this one's really exciting. Um, if any of it were to come to fruition, the Cincinnati Opera. Is actually um just like us in our Parks Department, trying to plan out a summer, um, a very unpredictable time, of course, with COVID and such and and their programming. Um, to the point to where they've actually reached out to us and several others to um see if there's an opportunity to do outdoor season. Um, and that would be basically salvaging their outdoor opera season. And we've started discussions with them that have gone very well. And um what they'd be looking at is an opportunity to use some type of park space, Summit Park in this in this sense. Um, and they probably camp out for a little while because they do um a series of um of shows for three or four weeks. And they would um take residency in in Summit Park and offer opportunities to um actually have the opera on the stage. Um, again, we're just in discussions with them. They're also in discussions with other um organizations and locations. But we were just excited that we were even a group that they would reach out to, to be honest with you. Um, I think they're a little excited about possibly having some opera in the suburbs, which would be really interesting. So just wanted to float that your way in case you hear anything about it. Since we've been working on it the past couple of weeks and we'll keep you updated.
Is this opera going to be outside or inside the building? Or they're going to make a building or what?
So it would be outside. So if they were to have production, it would actually happen on our stage. Um, their production is pretty significant. Um, but again, it would be up for three or four weeks. They would have their rehearsals during the week. And the concept would be is they would have those shows on the weekends, um, three of those four weekends, they would hope to have shows.
Fantastic.
Great. That is great.
Good news.
Yeah, great opportunity to have some um culture and arts in Summit Park. We'll be excited for it if it came to fruition. So we'll keep you posted.
Brian, how how's the hunt house going?
Good. Um, I don't see Gordon on, but um the last I heard from Gordon is that they um should have the engineer's um plans together that they can put together a bid package. I believe, I don't want to quote misquote, but I believe it was mid-March is that should be out on the street. And um, uh, not to steal his thunder, but I think he was pretty excited that the scope was lesser than originally perceived. So hopefully we get some bids back. They're nice and affordable and they move forward with that project this summer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any other rec questions before Brian uh gets out? Okay, good. Well, that is exciting about the opera, uh, as well as even the town square project. And so we'll certainly let you know the details um when we start to flush that out. I want to take the opportunity uh on the miscellaneous to also just kind of do a little bit of um review, look ahead, fiscal preparedness plan. So I'm going to try and share my screen here. And hopefully. Everyone is now seeing that. So um, so just just a quick um. Reminder, you know, twenty twenty, um, we finished twenty twenty actually healthier than we would have anticipated in terms of our budget. Um, looking forward to twenty twenty-one. If you saw this month's collections, uh, actually just surprisingly ahead. Um, and as we adjusted, um, you know, and and adapted to the budget last year in twenty twenty. You know, made some changes in our operations and what have you to uh reflect anticipated decline in revenue and what have you. And we certainly had some revenue sources decline, others stayed a little more stable than we anticipated. We had some one-offs. Those are. One-time savings or one-time revenue. We finished the year pretty, pretty healthy. But as we all know, moving forward in twenty twenty-one, there's two um potential uh threats to our revenue. One is um the whole uh work from home movement and what that may or may not mean long term to our office industry. Um, and then, of course, the second one is the temporary pandemic withholding tax requirement by um. Uh, that's associated with the governor's emergency orders. And when those are lifted, how that gets resolved is a threat. So, um, you know, what was it? Late November, early December, we had a budget meeting where we talked about our budget for twenty-one. We're prepared. We're really good shape. We have an immense revenue source. But nonetheless, we still want to just, you know, give you a directional overview of 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 an action plan. Should revenue um decline, something beyond, you know, a a small decline that we've certainly have handled. Uh, on our own over the past ten years or so when we've had decline. So there's nothing tonight about any specific program cuts or anything like that. It really is just a general action plan. Um, a quick preface before we uh go over these couple uh thoughts and concepts is, you know, just a reminder that. Budget is a value statement about who we are and what we want to be. So, you know, things like investing. Um, in Summit Park or building, um, you know, a really nice fire station and what have you are all value statements about what's important in our community. And presumably that provides investment into our community by people who see that. The other thing I want to remind you is, you know, we have the distinction of sometimes our service level or our needs. Or strategic investments um increase in local government um while the economy or revenues are decreasing. Um, you know, unlike a business that just some sometimes decrease when revenue is down, they just decrease their widget production, right? Uh, sometimes in government, we often have a need for increasing investments for uh short or long-term strategic return. So, you know, it can be a challenge for us. Um, and then the last thing I just want to say kind of under the auspice of. As we move forward and work together, hopefully in a in a not divisive manner, um, that we're not reductive. We're not, you know, break things down into black or white. There's lots of shades of gray in local governments and and where the decisions are. Um, and and try to avoid being guttural or politically opportune, particularly unfortunately in an election year for local council. I hope that, you know, should we get into this position where we have to start making that, that, yeah, we don't just make these upfront unnecessary. Uh, lines in the sand, hard statements that other people have to walk back, or we've become politically opportunistic. So with that being said, um, let's just talk some real general strategic concepts. Uh, the first thing we need to make sure we always do is anything that we do with regards to our budgets, we want to make sure it has. Align it with our goals and objectives. That's the same with our yearly budget process. We always make sure it aligns with our goals and objectives. But the same thing when you're talking about reducing it, you know, we want to make sure what is the impact on that and and what does that mean? Just just as a way of restating that importance, I'm going to um tomorrow um or early next week. Um, send everyone the goals and objectives again that we put together. We do it every two years with the council strategic retreat. And um so last year at this time, we put those together. But if you recall, those goals and objectives are the ones, you know, we're looking for an attractive, safe community with good transportation. They seem very vague and what have you, but they really do drive where we go and why we make investments like a new town square project for millions and millions of dollars, right? Um, some other things I'll get through these quick. You know, we obviously want to be outcome-based. We want to consider how well-leveraged a program is. You know, we may, you know, for instance, well, we want to cut that program because it's a fifty thousand dollar um cost to us. But we find out it's a four million dollar program. Um, it's very well-leveraged, right? So maybe you're focusing on the wrong thing if you're worried about that. Uh, just a little side. Um, I I know sometimes the word subsidy gets used for some of our departments. And I just want to remind everyone. Subsidy is something that happens when the city gives funds to an agency or an operation outside of our organization. You know, within our department, our entire organization is subsidized by general fund. Um, the other uh concepts that we want to stay, you know, we want to prioritize our strategic investments of a broad cut. So an example of this is, you know, sometimes you get faced with a budget cut of twenty percent or something like that. So, okay, twenty percent cut across the board. That may not be the most strategic um decision. If you're faced with something that you need to have a hundred percent of because you're looking for a return on that investment. So i.e. something like um an economic development uh project that you're working with. You can't say, well, sorry, we did a ten percent cut across the board, right? So I hope that makes sense. I'm not trying to be very vague with all these. But I just want to restate a lot of these principles that we've used in the past and will continue using. And just make sure everyone just, really, all I'm really trying to do today is give you food for thought. Think about this and just be prepared should this issue um come down the road. Finish with, uh, you know, obviously, we want to continue looking at fees, efficiency reduction. And then we clearly want to understand that, you know, both our community amenities and services and our safety services. Provide, what I would use the phrase, long-term value to our property, our property values, and more importantly. Uh, investment decision by current residents or future residents or business or stakeholders. So. Um, something to think about. Some some concepts that we have used in the past, we used even last year and currently. Um, uh, and then we will continue using as we prioritize where we might make those budget cuts and where we might uh. Uh, focus our energy on is obviously we want to review fees and revenue streams and cost avoidance. That's something that we do on an annual basis anywhere. Anyways, um, other tools in the toolbox are capital deferrals that have minimal strategic impact. So an example of this is um a a road that is about to be paved. It's, you know, we really think it ought to be paved next year, but because the budget cuts, let's go ahead and delay that a year or two. It doesn't dramatically impact the the strategic outcomes we're looking for. It's not ideal, but we can wait a year or two, if that makes sense. As opposed to something um that has a direct strategic impact. We're working with a company on an economic development in that uh deal. And we're going to give them a million dollars or we're going to do a million dollars of improvements that they need. We can't probably defer that or it would be less wise to defer that because that investment is going to pay off sooner rather than later, if that makes sense. So that that's as opposed to um number four, where we talk about capital deferrals that sometimes we may have to. Um, defer even though they have a strategic outcome. I think something like Town Square, we think there's some strategic outcomes to it. But if, you know, worse comes to worse, we may find ourselves making that type of capital um deferral. Reserve funds, um, you know, we've talked about the use of rainy day funds for the uh for the near future. We certainly have uh done well in in building a rainy day fund. So we certainly, that's a tactic we can use. Attrition and delay in hiring personnel, that's a very successful tactic we have used in the past that has uh. Uh, provided us some savings. Um, reassessing some of our holdings, you know, from time to time, we say, you know, maybe it's worth selling that. Surplus asset, we have to maintain it. And typically, these are surplus properties. We don't have a lot of those, but we have. Um, from time to time, looked at that and said, hey, maybe we ought to be more aggressive in selling that. Um, you know, these are all kind of standard budget one-on-one. I just kind of want to restate them again. But something like reducing overhead activities that don't support the direct service. Uh, but then eventually, if the cuts get deep enough, you may be dealing with um more core overhead services or even unfortunately, service level reductions. You know, no one wants to talk about that within our community, but that's certainly something. And then, of course, lastly, additional taxes. Um, is is always another potential tool. Not saying any of these are popular, any of these are where you want to go. But these are just things that we need to be thinking about as of now. Um, we're still on path that um we don't have to do this. We're we're still progressing very well with our budget. With any luck, I won't force you into any of these hard conversations uh later this year. But I want you to know that certainly internally, we continue to deal with these. Internally, we continue to be thinking about some of these scenarios. Um, we certainly want to all work together with with council, the admin, and even the community in in understanding that should there be some long-term. Uh, consequences to these to to this work from home movement and or our revenue sources. That, you know, it's not going to catch us off guard. It may be uncomfortable at the time, but but um I feel like we're pretty well-prepared, at least with a game plan. So there's a lot of esoteric, a little bit academic discussion there, but I wanted to make sure I shared that with you. And just plant that seed from time to time because you don't want to be trying to go and have these type of conversations when the pressure's really on. Kind of do it now while the pressure's not on and you're not under the limelight as as much. So. Any thoughts or questions on on that? Oh, I'm sorry. The other thing, I'm going to send you the goals and objectives. I'm also going to send you the updated capital improvement plan. So you can see things that um. Um, we're going to need to replace over the next four to five years. Uh, when you see the capital improvement plan, you will see it's a big, you know, it's it's a lot of big expensive items, but not. But what's not included on that is, in fact, the Haas Book redevelopment project. Um, any new items that council wants to think about. Um, uh, as well as even economic development incentives are not on the capital improvement list. So I'll get that to you uh early next week sometime. You can just look at it, give me a call. So with that, I'll stop. Any any other thoughts or questions? No? Good. Good. I bored you appropriately. So, um, so Mayor, that's all I have. You may want to ask Kelly and Sherry what what's on their mind and we'll go from there.
Kelly, what you got?
Uh, two items, since we just talked about um possible budget cuts. I'll talk about some revenue coming into the city. So we weren't able to close on the Pepper Mill House late last week. Um, so that's great. That's property off our books and and money in the bank. And then also, I'm not at at liberty to share all the details, but Neil is working on an economic development project. We have a company in Blue Ash who's looking to grow by forty jobs. We are competing for this, so they have asked for an incentive. Um, it's good salaries. It it is small enough that it's within the city manager's purchasing threshold. So we won't need council approval, but I wanted to give you a heads up that uh the ED world is is still hopping. And um we'll hopefully have an announcement in the near future for you all. That is all I have.
Sherry, do you have anything?
No, nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right. Jamie, I see you still on. You're muted.
That was a silent nothing.
Nothing. Brian, you're done. I take it with all your.
All set. Thanks, Mayor.
And then councillor, you're good?
I am. Sorry, wrong Brian. I'm good. Thanks.
Oh, no, that's my fault. All right, Jill, what do you think?
I just want to say, well, you know, we've only lived in Blue Ash for almost going on four years. And the last four winters have been very mild and we do like to be away when it's in the winter. But I just have to give a big, huge shout out to the road crews that took such wonderful care of our streets and roads. It was just absolutely amazing. It was a really tough couple of storms and, man, they were amazing. And so I'm just really grateful that we have. Um, you know, the the crews and the funding that we can do a great job to keep, help keep our residents and business people safe.
Second. Jeff?
Yeah, I think for the third or fourth time tonight, Jill has pretty much expressed my thoughts before I I get to them. Um, the snow plowing and 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 so forth has always been very good in Blue Ash in the eighteen years I've lived here. Um, and then just my my second thing is, um, I I will say, even though um my preference, and I'm sure most people's preferences is that is to meet in person. When it's safe to do so, I do think that that everyone's done a very good job of of meeting like this. I think it's worked very well. Um, and has uh shown that there's also shown there's uh numerous ways to to uh communicate. And has shown that there's, also shown there's numerous ways to, to communicate with residents. Now, I'd also then just say that to residents, we do allow you to comment live to us at the meeting. So I'd love to see more of you do it. It's very easy to talk to us through this format. So going forward, I'd love to hear from more of you.
Thanks, Jeff. Katie?
Yeah, just echoing the street plowing. I had no excuse not to go into work. Working from home a couple of days this week. But I'm also really excited. Thanks, Brian, for the updates on, on what's going on with Parks and Rec. I'm excited for the town square project and to see more of those designs and for it to kind of come to life and look at different options since it's right in my backyard. So I'm looking forward to that over the next year.
So you can take your jack over there, right?
Yes.
Joe, what you got?
Well, I, I'm, I'm happy that the road crews were able to keep me up with the snow plows and great job. And also I was so, I shoveled and helped a neighbor do their driveway. They refused. I, I refused to take any money. So they bought me some Bucketby brownies and they're very, it's very damn good. Support local business. And with that, thank you.
Lee, what can I tell from you?
You guys, everybody covered all the subject matter that I will have covered. So kudos again to the service department. They're always great at what they do. I, I always hear the comments from Redding, Sharonville, Montgomery. Our salt does wonders for their commies too. So there you go. So thank you very much. Everything's good, but have a good night.
Vice Mayor Javari.
Yes, sir. Hey, I just, just like everybody already said about our administration and our snow removing and everything, they're doing great job. So thumbs up for that. And then I'd like to say thanks to Chris, our fire chief, and Scott Knoll, our police officer. To celebrate my grandson on the tenth, that was the day before yesterday. He was excited when they created a parade for him for happy birthday. He's, he's three years old, so he was quite excited. So I just want to thank you them that they created a parade for him. So thanks again. And that's about it, sir. Mayor?
Thank you. Real quickly, I had a couple of passionate letters about town square. Long and short of it, I, I think everybody's very excited to do it. There is a little concern about, you know, is this the perfect time to do it? And I assured them that as long as I've been around Blue Ash, city administration and council has have always been fiscally responsible and they've done things where they can afford them. And I know like everything else has been done, that will be handled the same way. And I assured them we'll look at it when the time comes, but we're going to still do some planning and some thinking and if it becomes the time to do it and the money's there and that's when it'll get done, not before. But Brian is gorgeous if you're still on. And with that, I don't have anything else. So I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.